All right, good afternoon, actually, at this point, welcome to 2022 and January 1st. I was hoping for a better year, but obviously, we are still in pandemic mode. Adequate notice, this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public loss of 1975. Said notice was advertised as the Asbury Park Fest at the Beacon and was posted on the old Ford show in the time and place of view. Mr. Kennas is with us, be assumed today. He's feeling a little under the weather, so he thought it was safer to stay home. And Mr. Giuliano, unfortunately, is also under the weather and he is in a hospital at this time. So, before we start our meeting, I'm going to ask for a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I ask that you say stand. At this time, I'd like to offer a prayer. Lord, hear our friend Nick. Heal our friend Nick from his sickness. There is no earthly disease, sickness, or disaster that is too big for you and your healing. Lord, I pray that your hand be at work in the life of our friend Nick and you guide the sickness out of his body. You are the great healer and I have total faith that you can help relieve him of this. Thank you, Jesus, for your mighty protection. Amen. All right, we have a few things on the agenda. First, we need to swear in Committeeman McDonald and Committeeman Dykoff. And at this time, I'd like to call Mr. McDonald down so we can turn him in for his newly elected term. This is his family Bible that he's giving us today. I ask that you place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right, and you will repeat after me. I, Timothy McDonald.
I, Timothy McDonald.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of township committeeman.
Perform all the duties of township committeeman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States and in this state.
The government established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Congratulations, looking forward to the next three years. Mr. Dykoff, would you like to join us now, Franck? I, Mark Dykoff.
I, Mark Dykoff.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of township committeeman.
Perform all the duties of township committeeman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Congratulations. At this time, I ask the governing body to make a nomination for mayor for the year 2022.
I'm nominee Nicholas Giuliano.
I second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
We're going to forego swearing in of the mayor and the deputy mayor today because Mr. Giuliano is not able to join us, but we will do it at a later date. So, I'm going to move down to number five on the agenda, which is the nomination for a deputy mayor for the year 2022.
I'm nominee Mark Dykoff.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
And Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
At this time, I will turn the chair over to Deputy Mayor Dykoff and Mr. Dykoff, who will run the rest of the meeting for us today.
Welcome all and Happy New Year. Thank you all for coming out today. Item number seven, Resolution 2022-01, making various municipal appointments.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Designing Various Municipal Appointments and Assignments for the Year 2022. This is the liaison and co-liaisons that the governing body is assigned to for the remainder of 2022. Mayor is Nick Giuliano, Deputy Mayor is Mark Dykoff. Finance and Administration, the liaison is Stephen Kennas with the co-liaison of Mark Dykoff, which that includes Administrator, Clerk, Selector, Assessor, Treasurer, Planning, zoning, Code Enforcement, and Building Department. Community Social Services for Board of Health and Local Assistance Board is Peter Curatolo and Tim McDonald. Law and Public Safety, which includes Emergency Services, Municipal Courts and Police Department is Tim McDonald and Peter Curatolo. Department of Public Works is Mark Dykoff and Tim McDonald. Recreation is Pete Curatolo and Tim McDonald. Liaison to Beautification is Pete Curatolo and Stephen Kennas. Board of Education is Pete Curatolo and Tim McDonald. Pileless Commission is Stephen Kennas. Our Amount Commission is Stephen Kennas, which includes Legal Doping, Cassiers, and Lake Management. Library is Tim McDonald. Municipal Utilities Authority is Nick Giuliano and Mark Dykoff. Senior Services is Nick Giuliano and Peter Curatolo. Shade Tree Commission is Stephen Kennas. Municipal Alliance Committee is Tim McDonald and Mark Dykoff. American with Disability Act Committee liaisons are Pete Curatolo and Nick Giuliano. Solid Waste Advisory is Pete Curatolo and Nick Giuliano. Veterans Commission is Pete Curatolo and Tim McDonald. And then we have Tax Search Officer is Veronica Larray and Municipal Assessment Search Officer, I mean, Tax Search Officer is Trish Greco and Municipal Assessment Search Officer is Veronica Larray. Kind of a motion on that resolution, please.
Move it, move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Dykoff?
Yes.
I'm going to guarantee you, screw it up.
Item number eight, Resolution 2022-02, authorizing the appointment of a township attorney.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Authorizing Appointment of Christopher J. Connors in front of Dasty Murphy McCuffin, Belacchi, Casores, and Connors as legal counsel for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
I think.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Connors, does this pass today?
Yes.
Thank you. And the reason for the extensions is because Mr. Kennas does utilize the firm, Mr. Dasty's firm, for some personal work and Mr. McDonald does do some investments for the Dasty firm, not because they're voting no and they don't wish to have him reappointed. Next.
Thank you.
Item number nine, Resolution 2022-03, authorizing the appointment of a conflict township attorney.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Authorizing Appointment of Christopher Dasty of Dasty and Associates Corporation as conflict legal counsel for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Item number ten, Resolution 2022-04, authorizing the appointment of special legal counsel.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Authorizing Appointment of Lauren Steger of the firm of Ralstein, Mandel, Strom, Hom, and Cipriani as legal counsel for the Township of Lacey.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff? Deputy Mayor Dykoff.
Go ahead.
Going, Mr.?
Item number eleven, Resolution 2022-05, authorizing the appointing of an attorney for tax appeals.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Authorizing Appointment of Andrea Wyatt Esquire from the firm of Ralstein, Mandel, Strom, Hom, and Cipriani as township tax appeal attorney.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas? Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number twelve, Resolution 2022-06, authorizing the appointment of a township engineer.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Authorizing Appointment of Millis Looney of Bankkeep Engineering Associates, LLC, as the township engineer. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number thirteen, Resolution 2022-07, authorizing the appointment of a prosecutor.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Authorizing Appointment of Steven Sbarzki as county prosecutor, Brian Wilkie, Barry Steever, and David Casadante as alternate township prosecutors. Motion?
Move it. No, second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number fourteen, Resolution 2022-08, authorizing the appointment of a conflict township prosecutor.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Authorizing Appointment of Bonnie Peterson Esquire as conflict prosecutor for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number fifteen, Resolution 2022-09, authorizing the appointment of a public defender.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Authorizing Appointment of Christopher J. Dasty of Dasty and Associates as public defender and Joseph Ball, Jeffrey Cheney, and Brian Clancy as alternate public defenders for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number sixteen, Resolution 2022-10, authorizing the appointment of a conflict public defender.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Authorizing Appointment of John Nowak of the law. This is John J. Nowak as conflict public defender for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number seventeen, Resolution 2022-11, authorizing the appointment of a township auditor.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Authorizing Appointment of Jerry Conity of Holman, Framian, and Allison as township auditor for the Township of Lacey.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number eighteen, Resolution 2022-12, authorizing the appointment of a hearing officer.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Authorizing Appointment of John Nowak of the law offices of John J. Nowak and Bonnie Peterson Esquire as hearing officers for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number nineteen, Resolution 2022-13, authorizing the appointment of bond counsel.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Authorizing Execution Agreement with Megan Bennett Clark of Bluff, Walrath as bond counsel for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number twenty, Resolution 2022-14, authorizing the appointment of a township physician.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Appointing Cindy M.D. as a township physician for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number twenty-one, Resolution 2022-15, authorizing the appointment of a tax map maintenance engineer.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Awarding a contract to East Coast Engineering for tax map maintenance. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number twenty-two, Resolution 2022-16, authorizing the appointment of special project engineers.
Okay. Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Appointing special project engineers for the Township of Lacey for the year 2022. They are not assigned any projects until that time that we need to assign them to a project. It's a caller and co- co- lawyers engineering, I know I screwed that up. The LMO Group, Remington and Varnik, Morgan Engineering and Sir Bank, or Vach Consulting Group, T and O Associates, and French and Corolla.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
And Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number twenty-three, Resolution 2022-17, authorizing the appointment of a township planner.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Authorizing Appointment of John Hess of CME Associates as township planner for the Township of Lacey. Motion? Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
And Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number twenty-four, Resolution 2022-18, authorizing the appointment of a township architect.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Authorizing Appointment of Lenudo Architecture as township architect. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Sorry. I had somebody that asked me to dial them in. So that was Mr. Curatolo, yes?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
And Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number twenty-five, Resolution 2022-19, authorizing the appointment of a title search company.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Awarding a contract to Min State Hatcher Company for title work for the Township of Lacey.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number twenty-six, Resolution 2022-20, authorizing the appointment of appraisal companies.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Awarding contracts to Integra Realty Resources, Cultural New Jersey, Henry J. Mancini and Associates, an associated appraisal group for the free work for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it.
Abstain, reason being, Mr. Mancidi serves on the Ocean County Board of Health. And so, I will abstain from vote.
You can, you can make the second.
Second.
And then just.
And then a reason for abstain.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo, that's an abstention?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
And Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number twenty-seven, Resolution 2022-21, authorizing the appointment of a director of community development.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Appointing Christopher Reed as director of community development for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number twenty-eight, Resolution 2022-22, authorizing the appointment of a recreation director.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Reappointing James Wyland as recreation director for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number twenty-nine, Resolution 2022-23, authorizing the appointment of a municipal alliance coordinator.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Authorizing the Appointment of Heather Stanley as municipal alliance coordinator for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. We're halfway through, folks. All right. Item number thirty, Resolution 2022-24, appointing a public agency affirmative action officer.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Appointing Veronica Larray as public agency affirmative action compliance officer for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number thirty-one, Resolution 2022-25, appointing class one special officers.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Appointing a class one special law enforcement officer, Tyler Morris.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number thirty-two, Resolution 2022-26, appointing class two special officers.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Appointing a class two special law enforcement officer, Timothy Swin.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number thirty-three, Resolution 2022-27, appointing class three special officers.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Appointing class three special law enforcement officers, Francesco Bruno, Rogerio Santos, Stephen Russell, and Robert Johnson.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number thirty-four, Resolution 2022-28, appointing school crossing guards.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Appointing school crossing guards for the Township of Lacey. They are Diane Boyle, Carol Schultz, Peeling Di Benedetto, Robert Trupa, Anthony Menunaz, and Margaret Davis. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
And Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number thirty-five, Resolution 2022-29, appointing a safety coordinator and an alternate.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Appointing Kimberly Bassioni as the township safety coordinator and Robert Craska as the alternate safety coordinator for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
And Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number thirty-six, Resolution 2022-30, appointing a representative and an alternate to the municipal insurance fund.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Appointing Veronica Larray as the township's representative and Linda Picaro Cavello as the township's alternate representative to the Ocean County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund and the Municipal Access Liability Joint Insurance Fund. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
And Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number thirty-seven, Resolution 2022-31, appointing a representative and an alternate to the Community Development Block Grant Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Appointing Linda Picaro Cavello as the township's representative and Veronica Larray as the alternate representative to the Community Development Block Grant Committee. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number thirty-eight, Resolution 2022-32, appointing a mayor designee to the planning board.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Appointing Stephen Kennas as the mayor's designee on the Lacey Township Planning Board. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number thirty-nine, Resolution 2022-33, appointing a class two member to the planning board.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Appointing Chris Reed as the class two member to the Lacey Township Planning Board. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number forty, Resolution 2022-34, appointing a class three member to the planning board.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Appointing Mark Dykoff as the class three member to the Lacey Township Planning Board. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number forty-one, Resolution 2022-35, appointing a class four member to the planning board.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Appointing Neil Marine as the class four member to the Lacey Township Planning Board. Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number forty-two, Resolution 2022-36, appointing alternate member number one to the planning board.
Resolution Township Lacey County Motion State of New Jersey, Appointing James Letalier as alternate number one to the Lacey Township Planning Board. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes, item number forty-three, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-seven, appointing members to the zoning board of adjustment.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Ocean State and New Jersey, appointing Marian DeFranco, Craig Tamalo, Kathleen Decker, and Thomas Ball Junior as regular members to the zoning board of adjustment, motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes, item number forty-four, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight, appointing alternate member number one to the zoning board of adjustment.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Ocean State and New Jersey, appointing Harold Peters as alternate number one on the Lacey Township Board of Adjustment, motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes. Item number forty-five, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-nine, appointing members to the Board of Health.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Ocean State and New Jersey, appointing Scott Torrell, Harold Peters, and Donna Calvera as regular members to the Board of Health for the township of Lacey, motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes, item number forty-six, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty, appointing members to the Environmental Commission.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Ocean State and New Jersey, appointing Donald Trapp, Joe Gillings, Stephen Kennis as regular members to the Environmental Commission, motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes, item number forty-seven, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-one, appointing a member to the Lacey Municipal Utilities Authority.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Ocean State and New Jersey, appointing Alan Baker as a regular member to the Lacey Municipal Utilities Authority, motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
And Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes, item number forty-eight, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-two, appointing alternate member number one to the Lacey Municipal Utilities Authority.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Ocean State and New Jersey, appointing Karen McArthur as alternate number one to the Lacey Municipal Utilities Authority, motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes, item number forty-nine, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-three, appointing members to the A D A Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Ocean State and New Jersey, appointing members to the American with Disabilities Act Advisory Board for the township of Lacey, and those are Veronica Luray, Andrew Petty, Craig Tamalo, and Dino Lincan.
Move it, second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes, item number fifty, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-four, appointing members to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Ocean State and New Jersey, appointing members to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Rosemary Coffey, Robert Craska, Paul Cowan, Jack Nasty, Donald Trapp, Peter Curtolo, and Nicholas Giuliano, motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes, item number fifty-one, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-five, appointing members to the Beautification Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Ocean State and New Jersey, appointing members to the Beautification Committee, Lucille Michele, Linda Salzol, Agent Barron, Kathy Barron, Holly Martin, Trish Burke, and Robert Craska, motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
And Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes, item number fifty-two, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-six, appointing members to the Senior Citizen Recreation Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Ocean State and New Jersey, appointing members to the Senior Citizen Recreation Committee, Marie Krieger, Lorraine Egan, and Mary Mosi.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes, item number fifty-three, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-seven, appointing members to the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Ocean State and New Jersey, appointing members to the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, and those are Marie Krieger, Mary Camber, and Lorraine Egan, Mary Mosi, and Gloria Mako, motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes, item number fifty-four, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-eight, appointing members to the Veterans Commission.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Ocean State and New Jersey, appointing members to the Veterans Commission, and they are Bernie Snyder, Pete Forchester, Jim Molson, Howard Tombs, Ken Hanson, Brian Holt, Bernard Novak, Tom Verleza, Thomas Patrick, James Bernardo Junior, Michael Kilmeri, Donald Tenachchio, and S. Lee Peters.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes, item number fifty-five, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-nine, appointing members to the Municipal Alliance Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Ocean State and New Jersey, appointing members to the Municipal Alliance Committee, the Township of Lacey, they are Dorothy Bonacante, Michelle Clemmer, Rachel Clemmer, Dorothy Foo, Antonette Connolly, Michael DeBello, Lisa Edgeworth, Logan Edgeworth, Travis Edgeworth, Lorraine Egan, Thomas Faulkner, Debbie Smith, Michael Koslosky, Ray Maury, Donna McAvoy, Robin O'Brien, Millie Pappy, Barbara Race, Georgia Sabreys, Judy Santucci, Ed Scam, Kathy Scam, and Monica Zavaro, Peggy Snyder, Laura Timoney, Kamleen Tonkovich, Joan Topping, Ellen Bydell, Karen Vitatini, and James Lo.
Move it, second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes, item number fifty-six, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty, authorizing a temporary budget for two thousand twenty-two.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Ocean State and New Jersey, providing for the two thousand twenty-two temporary operating budget, this is to get us through the first quarter of the year. We are anticipating to only need at this point seven million two hundred twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars, motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes, item fifty-seven, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-one, authorizing the deposit of public funds in New Jersey banks.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Ocean State and New Jersey, authorizing the treasury to deposit public monies in any bank savings and loan or trust company having its place of business in the state of New Jersey, and which is organized under the laws of the United States or the state of New Jersey. Our main depository bank is Ocean First, then we also use T V Bank, State of New Jersey Cash Management Fund, N B I A, Ocwen Federal Bank, First Home Savings Bank, Sennlar Savings Bank, Penn Federal, Shore Community, Wells Fargo, Arnie Federal, Bank of America, P N C, M and T, San Sander, and Chase, motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
And Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes, item number fifty-eight, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-two, establishing the interest rate on delinquent taxes.
Resolution is, the Township Lacey County, Ocean State and New Jersey, fixing the rate of interest to be charged on delinquent taxes for assessments, this is all based on state statute, motion?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
And Mr. Dyckhoff?
I have here the last, Wesley. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-three, providing for dates of township meetings and the official newspaper of the township.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Ocean State and New Jersey, providing for dates of township meetings and designating the official newspapers for the year twenty twenty-two. Our dates are the annual second and fourth Thursdays of the month, in the summer we go to one meeting a month, which would be the second Thursday. In November, we go to the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, and our papers are the Beacon, the Asper Park Press, and the Atlantic City Press, can I have a motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
And Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Before we go further, I do, there are still some vacancies on some boards, collectively as a governing body, they have not met collectively to determine who those other appointments will be, so we will be discussing that and hopefully doing it in the month of January. Just so you know, there are still some vacancies, and we have received resumes. Mr. Dyckhoff?
So, the normal process during our meetings are, at this point in time, we go to comments from the committee, and then we open the floor to public comment. So we have a New Year's tradition where we open the public comment, anyone like to come up, say something, you're welcome. Mrs. Senta.
Thanks. Hello to all and Happy New Year, Regina descends the Sunset Drive Sunrise Beach. I'd like to take an opportunity this afternoon to sincerely thank the voters of Lacey Township that gave me the special honor and privilege to serve not once, but twice as a Lacey Township School Board member. I have now completed two terms of service for a total of six years, two thousand fifteen to two thousand seventeen, and then from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-one. My seat was won by Mr. Salvatore Amato. I'd like to encourage the public to please consider becoming a school board candidate this year. Three seats will be up this November. If anyone is interested, contact the Ocean County Clerk's Election Office to obtain a candidate petition. Only ten signatures are required to become a school board candidate. This Thursday, January sixth, at six P M. in the high school lecture hall, will be the annual school board reorganization meeting. It's a lot shorter and not as complex as this meeting. Please attend and welcome Mr. Amato, as he is officially sworn into his new position, congratulations, Sal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? See, no big motion to close the floor?
Second.
All favor? All right. Comments from the committee, Mr. Curtolo?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. As my term as mayor comes to a close, I just wanted to thank and recognize everybody, first and most importantly, our mayor, Nick Giuliano, we wish him the very, very best, he's having some challenges with his health. He's beloved as in our town, as his family is, and I want to wish him, as I know we all do, and you'll hear it several other times before this meeting concludes, we do love him, we do support him. We're going to be here for him to support each other and the folks in our town. And with that, I just wanted to thank everybody I've often said, other than marrying my wife, who's over here, and my daughter, my wife had my daughter, I was there watching, so. And that was hard enough, so, I want to, you know, from the seniors to the school board, the township, everyone that came out and supported me and us. We had an important referendum question, we opened dozens and dozens of businesses. It's been a great, great year, but for your support and the support of my family, in two thousand seventeen, when I was fortunate enough to be mayor, and now again in two thousand twenty-one, for my colleagues here, for Senator Connors, for Administrator Luray. All, when you're mayor, you're the face of the committee, but for your colleagues, you're one of five, and really one of six or seven, because you just can't do it alone. We have other important people here in the crowd, we have our chief of police, we have our families here, the folks that are getting sworn in, we have Commissioner Director Quinn and Commissioner Panes. But for what they do for us and the support they give to us at the county level, it's important to remember our county folks as well, we can't do what we do at the municipal level. They've been personal friends to me and us on the committee, and I want to acknowledge them for always being there when I make a phone call, for advice and counsel. Thank you all, God bless you, and it's been a great high honor, and I hope it goes on for many years to come, and I love you, God bless you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curtolo. Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Peter for his service in two thousand twenty-one as the mayor and the face of the township committee. Two thousand twenty-one was not easy, and he did a good job, he got us through it, through the ups and the downs and the sideways, and everything else that went on there, and I also want to thank this committee. Like I said, two thousand twenty-one was a challenging year for us, and while we had our differences, we came through it in what I would consider very good work. We're in good shape, the township's in good shape. So I just want to thank Pete, you led that, Pete, thank you.
You're a good guy, Tim, thank you.
My family, thank you. To my wife Laura, it hasn't been easy, but we get through it together, I love you. This young man beside her flew in from the U A A. How many hours did he go clean? Sixteen hours, and by the way, he usually would dress better than this, except in London, they lost his luggage. So he had to go out and buy some clothes yesterday or the day before, so, and then I have my son Logan, and then my daughter-in-law Jenna here, and I'm very appreciative of them being here. I also want to thank the hundred and fiftieth committee, which is no more, because this is a hundred and fifty-first, hundred and fifty-one year. But they had a very tough job, because to plan a hundred and fiftieth and all the events, you have to start at least a year and a half to two years in front of that, and that was COVID. And while it was successful, it wasn't what we thought when we first put it together. So I want to thank Jim Wyland and his committee, the Recreation Committee, because they were basically in charge of all of this, getting it forward, as you noticed, the sign has come down, but it was, considering COVID, it was, it was, it was a great year. Two thousand twenty-two, we are going to be full of challenges. We're going to hit, as you've known, the Fed has said, we're going to get three interest rates, that's going to hurt, there's no question about that. We got an economy that's, who knows? But we will get through this, we've got a good bunch of guys up here who work very hard, who aren't afraid to speak their mind, who aren't afraid to compromise to get through all of this, and that's the important part of this up here, is compromise. And so that's, that's where we're going to be, two thousand twenty-two will be very challenging, there's no question about that. And last but not least, I want to, yeah, thank Nick, and wish his family nothing but the best. Deputy Mayor, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Kennis?
I'll be free.
My wife is giving me a motion, and it's like, okay, be like that. Because I see my granddaughter's life starting to get antsy, she's in here, hasn't paid one bit of attention to me. This whole meeting, it just makes me feel about the opening, but at any rate, I digress. I also want to thank Mr. Curtolo for his leadership as mayor. While mayor is a chair of a meeting, there are a lot of additional duties and responsibilities that are taken upon, and we all handle it in our own way, and Mr. Curtolo really threw himself into it, he took a lot of pride in being mayor, and that's important. Pride, you know, we all take up here, and all of you, of course, take pride in living in Lacey Township, and we really appreciate that, and we appreciate you letting us know that sometimes we do a good job. Go right into, I'd like to congratulate and thank all the appointees and reappointees, again, you know, these are volunteer positions for the most part, which take time out of your family, and you'll see that when we thank